I applaud you, Mr. President of the United States of America, and to the Republic of the United States, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Tonight, we have the gentleman from the Attorney General's Office of State of New York that's going to do a presentation, Justice Michael. The floor is yours.
Thank you, Mayor. If you don't mind if I send your presence here.
You want to come this way, Brian?
Thank you all. Appreciate especially your letting me take the time to do this. I appreciate the hard work that goes into village government. I grew up in Illinois where my father was the trustee of our local village for about twenty years, and I waited many a long night for him to get home from those meetings. Way back in, now in 2007, when Andrew Cuomo was running for Attorney General of the state of New York, he, like many other folks who were running for office, had access to a number of political consultants and people in academia who knew how to find all sorts of important information. Like if he was going to visit the village of Rouse's Point, he would say to his folks, "Well, find out who's the mayor there, and let's see what we can find out about their illustrious mayor, and what charities and what corporations are headquartered in Rouse's Point, and let's see if any member items have been allocated by the state senator or state assemblyman to Rouse's Point." So that when he was addressing the issues of Rouse's Point, he would be, have all of this information at his fingertips. And one of the things he said during his campaign was, gee, if I'm elected Attorney General, I'll ask the state legislature for some money so that we can put together that all of that information that professional politicians have had access to for a long time and make it available for everyone to sort of level the playing field, so to speak. And so, when he was elected in 2008, the Attorney General Cuomo got the legislature to appoint funds to put together a website which is available online, has been for a little while now, recently updated, called SunlightNY.com. If you have a computer in your home, or even if you don't have a computer in your home at any public library, you can go on to www.sunlightny.com and find all sorts of information about state and local government that will help folks to understand what's going on, to hold their elected officials accountable, and hopefully for government to work better. Because we all know that as hard as we may try, government can always work better. This was not done with any partisan political agenda in mind. We think that both parties and all parties operate better when there's a little sunlight shining on the political process. And so, if you go to the Attorney General's website, there's a link there, and on Sunlight NY, you'll find that there are a lot of resources. One of the resources is if you are, you or perhaps a young person who is not experienced in government, wants to know, well, how does state government work, or why doesn't it work? What do these terms mean? We have a glossary there of all of the kinds of terms that go into legislation and local government, and even videos on the basics of New York government, how bills become law, the rules on lobbying and campaign finance. These peculiar things that we have in New York called member items, where the state legislators have discretionary funds that can be allocated for public purposes within their districts, and you can see a video on how it works. You can also, if you are interested in finding out how state or local government works in your region, simply click on a map, and we have a map here of New York, and click on it. You recognize that county up in the upper right-hand corner there? That's your county and mine. And if you click on that, you'll find a list of all of the local elected officials. And we have at position number 23, Mr. George A. Rivers, the mayor of the village of Rouse's Point, and there's a link there to the official Village of Rouse's Point website, a telephone number and an address. You can find these addresses, telephone numbers, and websites for local officials as well as state officials all over New York State. One of the important things, especially for village governments, would be, I was talking to a village government a few weeks ago, and they had a particular purpose, some piece of equipment that they really wanted, needed funding for, and didn't see how their village could pay for it. One of the trustees recommended that they contact one of the legislators about possibly getting some member item funds allocated toward that. And what you can do is look, for example, here on what member items have been allocated to Clinton County. You'll see that Assemblywoman Dupree had allocated funds as member items to various types of organizations here, and you can see the types of things that have been funded in the past so that you can frame your requests in a way that stands the greatest chance of getting funding for the purpose of In Rouse's Point. You can also find information, this is just by way of example, on Assemblywoman Dupree. You can look at her situation, you can put her name in, in any of the search engines on the site. You'll find how to contact her, where her office is, what committees of government she's on, what bills she sponsored. And this is an example, if you clicked on one of those bills, you'd see this is a gift for the Autism Awareness and Research Fund that you can now check off on your personal income tax form, and all of the other legislation that she's worked on. As part of this idea of shedding sunlight on things, you'll also see who has lobbied Assemblywoman Dupree on the various bills that she's been involved with. The idea being if you see a certain lobbying going on, and your legislator voting perhaps a way that you did not expect in light of that funding, you can ask some of the tough questions. We believe that government works best when our elected officials are held accountable for whatever type of lobbying and vote that they cast. Here you'll see a section of a lobbying report that was required to be filed by a lobbyist who lobbied Assemblywoman Dupree. And you'll also, on this site, find campaign finance information. Who gave money to her campaign? And this information is available for any official, local, or state who has enough campaign fundraising that they have to file reports with the state of New York. I should mention on here that none of this information that's on Sunlight New York is private information. It's all information that previously, and for a long time, has been publicly available, but it was very hard to find. You had to know just the right library to go to, or just the right person to ask for what file. Here, anyone, you, me, your local PTA group, if you're interested in looking at possible state funding or local funding for a particular cause, can use this website to explore what possibilities there are. Some of the things that you can also go on here to find, we have links to charities. If you have questions or concerns, or you have a cause that you would like to partner up with, a not-for-profit organization, you click on charities near the bottom of the screen, you can find all charities registered with the state of New York. Likewise, corporations that may be doing business in your area, you can find information on them, all in one site. And this is, we also, I should mention, Project Sunlight is a work in progress. When we first put it up, folks said, gee, it's very nice, but we need information on the state budget. So there's a section on the site where if you have a suggestion of information that you would like to see, and it's not there, write us, we will see if we can get it up there. We added the state budget bill because that's so important to all of us. And you'll see there, there's a contact information, you can just click on that, and there's a space where you can tell us what you would like to see on the site, and we'll do our best to get that up there for you. I know, for example, I'm from the, I live in the city of Plattsburgh, I talked to our town supervisor Bernie Bassett, and he was saying, gee, it'd be nice, once we had that census information out in 2010, if some of that could be linked to this site. And so, that's a possibility we're looking into. I encourage everyone here, both our elected officials and members of the general public, to avail yourself of this resource. What I say is that you and I have already paid for it with your and my tax dollars, it's available. If we use it, it will help our government to work better. And a little caveat, that this is a very popular site, we're getting thousands of hits every day. Some websites, when you go online, they keep track of who's looking at what information so that folks can see if your household is interested in looking at a certain type of information. We keep track only of the number of hits on this website, no other information. In other words, you can look at Big Brother on this website, but Big Brother will not be looking at you. It's completely anonymous, and that's an important feature of this site. So thank you very much. I encourage you to use this resource to help your local government to work better, and for our elected officials to make their job a little bit easier, because we know it's a tough one. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mayor. Very informative. And I'll try to get this material out of your way as unintrusively as possible. We'll find out why I have a degree in law and not engineering. Never have enough lawyers here.
Good night. Thank you so much. Thank you very much. Okay. I hope you made it to the public at this night. Anybody wishing to address the board may do so. Say your name and where you live.
Chris Young, Beechwood Drive, Russell Point. I'm sure, George, you're already aware of the water damage that affected several individuals on the street. I believe there is a minimum of three factors that caused this. One, the village is already agressed, and that was the cleaning of the turnaround on Pine Beach Drive. It virtually created a dam, forcing the water to flow down onto Beechwood Drive between the two houses of Tommy DiSo and Stephen Young. The second, which I gave you a letter that kind of backs itself, is in 1984, the village sent the residents on the north side of Beechwood Drive a letter requesting that they be allowed to clean the ditch, access our property and clean the ditch, as it was an inadequate source for the storm flow. They did this, just as they requested, and everybody let them. In coming years, the school asked that this ditch be filled in at a culvert place for the safety of the children, which again makes sense. I was told that there was an 18-inch culvert in there, and somehow a 12-inch culvert was placed in, which of course cannot handle the flow of an old ditch. The third item, I believe, that caused the runoff was the doubling the size of the Wyatt Parking Lot without providing additional damage. As you notice also, in the letter dated July 12, 1984, that the system along that edge of the parking lot was restricted in size to limit the flow because the ditch could not hold water. I believe these three factors led to the failure of the village system, and caused the damage to, I'd say at least seven residences, from the people I see here.
At least everybody on the house.
I'd like to add, this really has only happened, at least to my residents, twice in the thirty-some years I've been there.
I've been four times.
Yours four.
When the Wyatt Parking Lot went down.
And that's since the doubling of the parking lot.
Number three.
And the filling in of the ditch and replacing it with a 12-inch culvert. I have already filed a claim with the village, and they've been very responsive to me. But I'd like to see what the village is going to attend to.
Our village engineer will be here tomorrow to take what affects the situation. Thank you. We're all.
All good here at Beechwood Drive. I was a guilty party back in 1984. I was a mayor that authorized that letter be sent. Kind of true, George. Somebody remembered. And all we intended to do at that particular time was clean the ditch out, because it was all full of trash and garbage. We did, it worked beautiful. Then, I think it was the principal of the school didn't like the old ditch next to the scooter. And therein lies the reason why we got the, the covered over 18-inch to 12-inch, anybody going 18-inch to 12-inch, I had to have minded to examine closely, and their engineering capabilities thrown out the window, because that's about as dumb as a brick.
That was never engineered, Paul. Hmm? That was never engineered.
I know it wasn't engineered, I know, I'm pretty well aware of who put it in. However, it is costly. I'm one of the very fortunate ones who, after the last one, called my insurance company and was told, no, it's a flood, we don't, you don't have flood insurance. So we cleaned up our own mess, took it in the air, and then I called the insurance company back and said, get me out of that damn company, I want coverage. I don't want flood coverage, I want water damage coverage. And then I was told, at that time, I bought it, I paid extra for it, I have a $5,000 policy that covers that, no more than five for five. And I got that through what was pockets then, and they're just the agent, not the, let me see, I'm trying to remember the name of the company, it's.
Ranger.
Yeah. Yeah. It's National Ranger, it's good policy, and they're very honest there. I was told when I called this, the following day, that immediately get ahold of Servpro. I also was given a choice of another company who just happened to be 150 miles away from Rouse's Point, and said they wouldn't come. But Servpro finally, because they're not listed in the home book, which is rather a unique way to find them. I went on the internet, found them, and got their number back. They came in, brought multiple devices, fans and dehumidifiers. I think right now I got four fans and three dehumidifiers in the basement. They left them on all weekend, so if my electricity goes up, you'll know why. Also, of course, pretty hard to do anything in the house downstairs and needing, because that noise is so loud. They stopped in again this noon time. They said they'll be back tomorrow, and hopefully it'll be dry enough to get those out of there, at which time they will file a claim with the insurance company. But I just asked out of curiosity, how much is this thing going to cost me, which you guys have done? I mean, because really, the people from Servpro were there a total of probably, between last week and today, less than an hour and a half. The machines have been there all weekend, but they told me it could be about $2,000 or $3,000. That's a hell of a lot of money for water.
May I suggest, anybody that's got damage to do with Chris Dunn, got a couple others, submit your letters with your damage to us so we can forward them to our insurance company, because that's a, we've already made contact with them, we've sent them Chris's letter, Larry Houston's letter, and I believe there's another letter coming in today.
I'll send you one.
So. Just something in writing saying that on such and such a day, you experienced damage due to the faulty, say the faulty storm sewer system or whatever. I don't know if the system is faulty, but certainly some fault there.
The terminology I was told by the insurance agent to use is, don't use the word flood.
No, yeah.
You describe it as water damage in your basement caused by inadequate.
Inadequate, yeah.
Storm sewer system.
So if you do that, we'd appreciate it. Anybody that's got damage, and we'll, we'll forward them to our insurance company, they've already been notified.
Also, I gotta re, have the whole basement redyed up, because they're popping hot like popcorn right now.
I believe, yes, ma'am.
So when the insurance adjuster comes, how do you deal with that, if they were only able to come like tomorrow? We have.
Just fine, whenever, whenever you get it done, get it to us.
But send, rather than to put it through the, our own insurance.
Put it to your own insurance company too.
And then what's left, or?
No, no, because here's what's gonna happen, I believe, now, I might be wrong, but the two insurance companies are gonna fight it out.
Okay.
George, I might be able to add a little to that. Again, Chris Young, Beechwood Drive, Russell Point. I contacted the village's carrier, and they told me first that my insurance company would have to submit a letter of denial, and then the village insurance company would send out an inspector to do a estimate on it, being that I actually had my foundation shift, she was trying to push something, put a little extra effort behind it.
I think, I think right now, the ask, time is yes, as quick as possible. Take some digital pictures still. There's a lot of them been taken.
We have letters here that maybe Chris wouldn't mind sharing, it's kind of like a form letter to give the rest of the residents, copies, if you want, so you can follow. The wording is pretty good here, actually. It says possible factors, if you want me to allow me to read it.
That's fine.
Possible factors leading to the failure of the source storm sewer system are listed below. Elimination of the drainage dish on the north side of property and replacement with undersized piping. This is all written in a letter, in it, from Chris Young, and also Larry Houston. They're basically the same letter, I'm sure we can do as a form.
I'll get your copy.
Larry, Chris can give you copies, or we can make you copy, and then you can put your own, no reason why, because it's all the same problem, problem.
You know, this is the third time that's happened, and the water in our floor drain was up that high because of pressure inadequate to take the water downstream. Except the water going out of drain is coming in the drain.
Should have like a check valve probably on that. I have the same problem on my end of the street, and I asked the mayor today, hey, mayor, what do I do with that? She says, you better put a check valve in it. It's happened several times with my residents.
Can you put a big check valve in the floor drain? You have to put it out by the street because you ain't gonna dig up all my cement.
No, I think it's the homeowner's responsibility, right, that question?
No, but it'd have to be put out in the middle of the lawn somewhere.
Yeah, on your lawn somewhere.
Right, that's what I'm saying. I have one, and I have to do that.
I didn't know they made them that, that big for that bite.
Just so happens that my basement, as you all know, is ground to street level, and then I back throw, I don't have, I didn't dig a basement that's below ground. So I'm sure, I know I helped Yale. When the little bush was there, we put the, I put the basement in Yale's house, I know, twenty years ago.
Yale being used in 18 Beechwood, this is our fourth time. And the first time we got water, we thought it was the parking lot because of the drainage. I don't know if you remember that, Tommy DiSo and Dick Kane, but it was Fox that was here at the time, and he came up and said, of course, I never put anything in writing, which I should have, and he said, no, it's not, anybody's fault, it stopped the parking lot. Well, you remember that, because you moved in, and Paul moved in, Nelson went up and said it was a mess up there, they did something and they fixed it. But then I got a letter from the village saying, well, we're sorry, you were right, but, I mean, I lost freezers, carpet, the whole nine yards. Well, the second time, we called the other night, we could see the water coming like a river from over there, and our street actually was handling, I mean, it was going down, but it was handling it, but when it came from seas, I mean, my question is, what can be done over there to have it stop coming over? Because we're low compared to that other street.
Well, we're, that's why I'm asking the college engineer tomorrow, is to take a look at the whole situation.
And Kiran has been keeping the drain open behind us.
Yeah, so Kiran Gilroy, 20 Beechwood, that ditch that was on the north side, when they put the culverts in, the one over behind, Mrs. Bedard's right behind my house, always to me seemed like it was, wasn't very, done very well, because it flows down and the leaves plug it up. I've gone over it many, many times, I've also called the village when I see it before I went into work, but many's the time I'm going to clean that out myself, and I noticed that night, I looked out my dining room window, and it was flowing like a river, it wasn't, I don't think it was doing anything. And the next day I showed, or two days later I showed Chris, I took him to show him, and it was almost all flooded then. And I'm just wondering if there is something that could be done, maybe to alleviate that somehow, I don't know. I'm just, absolutely look at it. Again, everything flows down into a hole, and it washes the leaves down, plugs it up. It doesn't seem to me that it's a very efficient way of operating. Again, I don't know if it's any.
They had a problem right on Pines, right on Washington Avenue, the state put in those drains, and they put real narrow, and it plugged right up, and when I, the other night when I came down, the water was, the water was flowing right down Washington Avenue, right over the top of the drain.
Yeah.
Right? So I went out and shovelled and cleaned it, so the water started to go down. Yeah. Yeah, Paul.
The interesting thing the other night though is, most of the drains on Beechwood Drive were handling the water.
Oh, I know that.
And then there came big surge from god knows where. And I know that the drain that he's talking about cleaning, in 1984, when I went up and looked at that, that had a 55-gallon drum. that had a 55-gallon drum top welded to that drain, okay? Blocking it. And I didn't think that was, I wasn't very smart. But in any case, I believe that drain is taking water out of the parking lot and putting it in the schoolyard. You might wanna run some dialing down there, and see where that flows.
Well, you can counsel camera, we have a system that we can camera.
Because I think that's one of why it's solutions was to... Somebody else's...
I think they got drains in the parking lot, don't they?
They have, but the simple thing, you don't put a lot of parking lot to that hole.
Yes, ma'am.
Yeah, again, John, what's that thing you're talking about that you put in your front yard that you were talking to them about?
The check valve sewers.
What is that?
It's a, it's a one-way valve.
That's the water only go one way.
But you waste a lot of the valve.
It stops.
Cyrus, Cyrus, yes, sir.
I'm Mike Monick from Three Pine View Drive. The problem is, is, also exists on the south side of Pine View Drive as well. Because right where my backyard meets the next yard, which is Molly Bigor, Molly and Gary Bigor, at its peak, that water had to have been two feet deep, flowing like a river through there. I mean, deep enough that people's firewood was floating by. And, and at that point, and this has only happened in my, at my house, twice in 21 years that I've been there. When it's gotten that bad, my, I have a floor drain in the middle of my basement, and my basement is finished, the water comes out.
Yeah.
And with a significant amount of pressure.
That indicates that, you know, the drain is, to its maximum, can't take anymore, so it pushes, going, working, going.
So you need bigger pipe than there.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Well, we do, if I might comment, I know we had this problem on Smith Street in the backs of people's property, adjoining properties with the new development. We are not legally, I don't believe the village can legally go on people's property and put drains in there. That's what we, we had a problem with Mrs. Bolonia. The people on both sides started filling in and left a big hole, and she got all the water. And we were trying to figure out, it was last year, we're trying to figure out, two years ago, how to remedy the situation for her. And, and really...
The only way is that we have to get easements.
For her to have to either fill, so she's level with everybody else, but we, I don't think the village can go into everybody's property and start putting drains in there. You know? I mean, in the front of the streets where, where we don't have, like you say, you have a 12-inch drain pipe, which the village must have put in, it's not accurate. Now, well, there we can probably, if it needs to get a bigger drain, hopefully, you know, maybe double the size of the drain pipe.
Chris Young, 80 Detroit Drive. The north side of Detroit Drive, the little castle right in the way.
Yeah, I know that.
That road and the school.
Yeah, so that, that's okay, you know?
But if we have to go on somebody's property like we're talking about, we have to get easements, John. And it's, it's a hell of a process.
Yeah, again, that, there's a ditch, who put the ditch behind where Penny and my parrot lived? He's talking, there's a ditch that goes all the way down Priscilla, that would probably end up where you live, that ditch, where, that must have been put in, behind...
Probably the developer put that in.
That ditch must have filled up yesterday.
The developer, it's up to the developer of that area to put those in. I think the village supplied them with materials, but they had to put it in.
Because there's a big ditch back there.
Yeah, by County Stone, that whole area, it's pretty big, but I think they must have done that, right? To build the street.
They done that, well, yeah, that's up. The housing development off the top of that, where it was roof caved in. That was all part of it. There was a drain put in by the village at the house right directly across the street from me. Used to be, at the time, I think it was the Saunders lived there. And there is a check valve on that one that was put in by the village. They got an easement, they did it, and it solved their water problem. In fact, the guy that lives there now, he was out walking in the water with us, and he said, "We don't have any water, and I feel like I don't belong here." It's weird, but I mean, he's got a check valve that I know the village put in. My, my drain did not back up. The water came through the cellar floor at at least 18 inches squirting up, okay? I assume a lot of that was due to the fact that the ground was so saturated by the excessive rain we had. But it was then not coming out of the drain, we were draining out of the drain. We were directing, redirecting the water to the drain. Even your fire chief couldn't hear, because I couldn't, they wouldn't let me play with the broom, so the fire chief was helping my wife to push the water down the drain. They told me, "Get the hell out of there." Well, they're being honest.
Well, we're gonna, we're looking at the situation, Doc will be here tomorrow afternoon, and that's number one item on the agenda.
George, I just want to thank both the fire department and the village employees for the job they did at my house, and I believe in the area.
I appreciate that.
They were checking everyone's houses.
I want to thank you too, Josh, for responding so quickly.
Well, when you call me, I said, "Wait, did you call down there?" He couldn't get busy. Go, "Doc?", I go down there, well, the poor son of a gun, he couldn't answer the phone fast enough. And, and he was trying to use the same phone to get people out.
Yeah.
And so, it wasn't that he wasn't trying, but he was...
I get in, but there was no answering, and I call the police department, no answer there, so I says, "I know one more guy." And that's why you got the call.
Not a problem, not a problem.
But I do appreciate your response, as well as the other guys. Fire chief was amazing.
That, folks, I sympathize with you, I really do, and we're gonna try to do everything we can. It is a problem, and we need to address it.
Can we possibly have a re-meeting at some specific period of time, so we're all be on the same page?
Yeah, we can keep you informed what's going on, that's not a problem.
We can write something up from the engineer and give you a copy of that.
Good.
Don't forget, get your, get whatever, you know, your, your letters in, because that's the only way they're gonna, the insurance company's gonna react, until they get something in writing. Unfortunately, that's the way this world is today.
Yeah, the liability laws, as far as I remember, is once you've been notified, the village has been notified that it has an issue.
Yeah.
It has to respond to it, if it doesn't, then you, you guys get hit in the head.
It's all right.
I mean, that's fine, I mean, everybody passes the...
I got a lot of bumps up there.
When we send that letter to you, do we have to indicate, like, what we've lost, or the amount of what we lost?
Just say that you got damaged.
Okay.
Just say that you got damaged.
Okay.
And it's up to the insurance company to come down and...
Okay.
There's no way that anybody can do that without, you know, having some knowledge of what's going on.
So that's in addition to the insurance we already have, still write this letter to you, in case it's not covered?
What happens is, is that you go to our insurance company, you go to your insurance company, and then all of them two are gonna clash heads.
Okay, thank you.
One way or the other, you're...
I have insurance coverage. I got, I did similar thing to what Paul did. I, I got a cover that, that covered me for backups and this type of thing. They said if it's seepage, then maybe not a flood, but if it's coming through your drain, then you're covered, but I have a $1,000 deductible.
Yeah.
So I think my insurance is gonna cover this, but not $1,000 of it, that's gonna come out of my pocket.
So, I, I can't explain that to you, I don't know, I don't know.
So, so what my hope is, is that, you know, if the village is gonna do something, that at least I wouldn't take the monetary loss at all.
Well, that's obvious, the remediation portion of this is gonna have to be the village's insurance policy.
I would think so.
Because, I mean, it only makes sense if the problem was caused by village equipment or village facilities. So they gotta fix it, make it better, so it doesn't happen again.
Well, some of it is an act of God, too.
Well, rain's act of God.
That wasn't an act of God.
Rosas Point had rain, but only two streets shut. That kind of moves it away from...
I was in Saratoga, so it really hurts out there.
$1,000, something like that.
Thank you all for coming, I appreciate it, and we'll do what we can to help you. Okay, at this time, does anybody else wish to address the board?
I have one more question, that related to water. What's going on with the cell tower?
I noticed it may speak out.
I didn't, I saw that, but it wasn't me.
Did you ask me that same question a few weeks ago?
We have a, we have a contract with JNS Towers. They are dealing with Verizon. Verizon wants to put their antenna on our water tank. And my comment to Verizon is, I don't have a problem with you putting on a water tank, but you're gonna give me a guarantee that there will be no damage to the coating on the inside of that tank. Because we have a guarantee from Landmark, and that's good for X number of years. And so I told them, "Do deal with Landmark." If Landmark says it's okay, then it's okay with us, and that's where it stands.
Okay, I just wanted to know, because I was in here all winter, and I knew that it was passed, I'd asked Brian, told me it was approved, I mean, to get the tower. So I didn't know, because nobody seemed to know, thank you very much.
That's what's going on.
Okay, thank you.
And that's where it stands.
Do you need a copy of that?
I haven't got a clue, Paul, I know nothing about it. And all I know, Verizon, that they want to put a tower up here, or on that tank, or going on two years now.
But when you were on Route Two, you picked up a Canadian first.
I think that's what I was... See, unfortunate thing, Paul, here is, with telecommunications which between the Indian government and the United States government, we cannot infringe on them, but they can infringe on us. I had some agreement.
That's why we had a...
Thank you very much, thanks a lot.
Okay. Thanks again, folks. All right. Nobody else wishes to address the board at this time? Minutes of the previous meeting, boards all got copies, is there any addition from the...
I make a motion to accept the minutes, now she regularly, July 20th, 2009.
I have the second minute.
Motion by trustee Jefferson, second by trustee Cooper, any discussion? There being no discussion, all in favor, both of you, a sign of aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, vote Gary. Bills, you all have copies of the bills, is there any addition or deletion? Thank you, I said.
I'll make a motion to pay the bills tonight.
Sorry.
Moved by trustee Jefferson, second by trustee Burks. Any discussion? There being no discussion, all in favor, both of you, a sign of aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, vote Gary. Correspondence?
The first letter I have is addressed to Mayor Rivers. I am getting ready to retire within two months and find it necessary to resign from my position on the Village of Rosas Point Planning Board. The time served has been educational and rewarding, giving back to the community you live in is important to me. Hopefully, I was able to do that in a small way by being on the planning board. Please accept my resignation as of today, which is July 20th. Thank you for allowing me to be a part of a very nice community, that was from the Rain Board.
I'll make a motion to accept the letter of resignation with deprogram.
I second that. Moved by trustee Jefferson, second by trustee Cooper, any discussion? There being no discussion, all in favor, both of you, a sign of aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carried. We'll come back to that, under my report.
The next letter I have is from Dodge and Moyer Library. Dear Board of Trustees, please be advised that beginning September 1st, 2009, the Rosas Point Dodge and Moyer Library will extend its library hours. Currently, the library is open 32 hours per week. Beginning September 1st, the library will be open three additional hours per week for a total of 35 hours per week. The new schedule is as follows, Monday and Tuesday, we'll be open from 11:00 a.m. until 7:00 p.m. Wednesday, Thursday, and Friday from 12:00 noon until 5:00 p.m. Saturday from 9:00 a.m. until 1:00 p.m. Closing the library prior to 7:00 p.m. will allow public organizations the opportunity to utilize the library for meetings without the interruption to the public or to the meetings. And that's from Andy Hewitt.
Information only, Ward.
The next item I have is from New York State D E C. It's a letter that was written from Minister Thomas Rinaldi, Director of Division of Forest Protection, to Michael LeBlanc, the Rosas Point Fire Department. This office is pleased to inform you that your fire company has been granted an award of $1,000 under the federal Title IV Volunteer Fire Assistance Program. The award is intended to assist your company in the purchase of much-needed equipment. In order to provide this grant to your fire company, it will be necessary for you to follow certain standard state and federal procedures which are outlined in this letter. Do you want me to read the whole thing?
No.
George?
No. And as it's, we have to match $1,000, and that's already been done. Well, Mike has already, in his budget this year, had things that will match that. Thank you, State of New York and D E C.
The next letter I have is addressed to the mayor. Since 1961, the Conference of Mayors has annually honored public officials who have served a single community for 25 years or more by awarding them a certificate of public service. The privilege of presenting the actual certificate is reserved for each municipality, thereby affording you the opportunity to extend recognition and appreciation to the individual official with whatever formality you consider appropriate, which we're just gonna read it tonight, and then the ones that have, will be receiving the certificates are Ernest Barkum for 30 years, Nelson Barkum for 30 years, Brian Pelkey for 25, Dan McCallum, 25, and Gary Linskey, 25, years of service. And that's from Peter Baines, our executive director. And the last, is that the last? The last one I have is, Mayor and trustees, the members of Montgomery Holes Hook and Ladder Company, Number One Incorporated, recently approved sponsoring a fundraiser to replenish funds recently used for the purchase of a fireboat and trailer. In an attempt to try something new, the members would like to sponsor an Oktoberfest... Okay, I just lost my train of thought. Okay, to be held inside the Rosas Point Recreation Center on Saturday, September 19th, 2009. This Oktoberfest will include German food, and if approved by the village board, German and domestic beer. We formally request use of the building and grounds, and all festivities will be held inside the rec center. Obviously, food will be prepared outside and served inside. We request the village board to approve selling and serving of alcoholic beverages on the premises. The beer consumption area will be restricted to individuals over the age of 21, and this will be strictly enforced. We thank you for your continued support of our company and trust that this request will be satisfactory and accepted. This is from Dennis Roberts.
No comment. I hope this place is ready by then, the way we're going.
Okay, I'll make a motion to allow the Montgomery Holes Hook and Ladder Company to use the rec center on Saturday, 19th, 2009, for the Oktoberfest.
I'd like the second amendment.
Moved by trustee Jefferson, second by trustee Cooper, is any discussion? There being no discussion, all in favor, both of you, a sign of aye.
Aye.
Thank you, gentlemen.
We need a waiver of the open can, is that what you need also?
Um, I'm not sure what you guys do for the Fourth of July, do you... Everything's gonna be consumed inside, yes, so I'm not sure if you need a waiver or not.
Well, I might just well.
Yeah, you need one, because it's on village property.
Dennis, keep checking with Mike, though, be sure we're...
I'm sorry?
Keep checking with Mike, see how our progress is gonna be.
Yeah, that's, that's good heads up. Well, we might...
Because we don't know ourselves.
We might wanna start thinking we're back up.
We're cautiously optimistic it's gonna be...
Do you want to include that in part of your motion, Brian?
Yes, I'd like to put that in there, I'd like to...
Add the waiver?
Add the waiver for the consumption of alcohol.
And I will need that in writing, Mr. Mayor.
Not me, not her.
Okay, well, come from Carol? Okay, perfect, thank you.
She's the clerk, not me.
Okay, thanks.
Is that what you get paid to make the buck for?
That's all I have.
Thank you, Carol. Reports of mayor and trustees. First thing on my agenda is authorize the mayor to sign an agreement, easement agreement with Wyeth. This agreement was signed with Wyeth, oh, I wanna say maybe a year or two ago, I don't know. But what it is, is it's the same easement, nothing has changed, except that there's... Nothing has changed, except that the agreement's going over to Akronak. So that's what it is, just, it's a formality. I don't have a problem with it. The attorney doesn't have a problem with it, but he wants to read it before he gives... So what I need is permission to sign the agreement after the attorney gives his blessings.
I'll make a motion to authorize the mayor to sign the easement agreement with Akronak after reading it by the, after having it read by the village attorney.
Sorry.
Moved by trustee Jefferson, seconded by trustee Burtz. Any discussion? And that's that, the gas line they put across the old water tank. All those in favor, both by your side of eye?
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carried. Second thing on my agenda, which upset everybody in the village, was the dog law. Right? And unfortunately, it got put in the paper not the way it should have been, but we're gonna amend that tonight. We, the law is not enforced until we get it back in the Secretary of State's office, and it's not back down there now, and only Carol puts the amendment we're gonna act.
I spoke, when I spoke to Tom today, what we're going to do is he's gonna put in the language on, that was originally into our law that we had in place, that's always been, where nobody's gonna have a problem if they walk down the street, nobody's gonna stop them with their dog, you know, they can do. And then he's gonna leave the language and just add some more words in there on that one section about, hold on here, let me get it right.
60 dash 2.
Creating a nuisance by defecating, urinating, or digging on public property or private property of said owner. He's gonna change the language in that a little bit so that it's a more understandable, but it's not gonna affect anybody with their dogs.
Doesn't stop anybody from walking their dog down Main Street, and if you want to raise his leg on a fire hydrant, he may do so.
So take the wording of the urination out?
Well, no, he's gonna leave that in there, because what this pertains to, he explained was the individual who, the owner of a dog, that had, creates a nuisance in their own, on their own property, for example, and the neighbor living next door has, wants to file a complaint against the neighbor, if that were to happen, they have something in here to address it. The way he explained it to me...
Let's say, John, you got a dog, and you let it run loose in your yard, but he runs over in my yard, and he decides that he is gonna do his business in my garden continuously. That's what's about.
Well, basically, or even if it's somebody didn't address their situation with their animals in their backyard, and there was a stench or something that came from it, there's something in the law that they can address. So he's gonna put the wording in there so that it's more, a little more understandable to us.
For the average, I would say.
So he will be amending it, and then we'll present it again, and go back to amendment to the local law.
With that, I urge every resident that has a dog and walks them, and he likes to do some sidewalk with somebody else's property, that they please pick it up.
Should that be just dogs or domesticated animals?
Can't do it.
What about a cat problem? That's what we're saying.
But that's, there's nothing in the state ag law that addresses cats.
Yes, there is, George, under domestic animals, not cats.
Check with the attorney.
Didn't I show you dangerous animals? I happen to have a cat problem. My, my street, there's, there, there does mainly domestic animals, cats are, in the new law.
I know that I had, Mr. Renee, researches to do this law.
Well, maybe he's not aware of the new domesticated animal law, which includes cats.
Well, it would be. You can call him in the morning, John, you're gonna be in the office.
Yeah, who's there, police?
I'm not arguing, but we brought that, domestic, dangerous animals and domesticated animals, and it's in the definition.
And I have to agree with you, I mean, there is a cat problem.
If you have a neighbor's cat that's coming over in your yard, and which cats do from time to time, I have one that comes drifting in through my way.
Get a dog.
Zip it, pardon?
Get a dog.
That's bad.
Move on.
I request a change of tape. We're gonna be hit for it. Yeah, go ahead. While you're doing that, this doesn't have to be on the table, continue. Because this is strictly for the board. There, in your... Anyway, we're going to be required, and I don't know how we're gonna do it, and I wish Brian was here, but we're gonna have a discussion with Brian, to insulate 113 homes, minimum, and bring them up to standards. Now, I don't know how many homes, that's only homes that are using electric heat, by the way, if you don't. We can't insulate somebody that uses fuel well.
Will we pay for a thermal scan first?
We have that capability. We have that, and that's what we're talking about, doing energy audits. We have a thermal imaging camera that we bought two years ago to do the substation work.
You need to sign this, not me. This one.
Oh.
So he's gonna have you sign it so you can leave?
Next week, also.
Next night?
Next week.
He's not supposed to pass it.
So, the thermal imaging camera, so we're gonna have to start doing energy audits. I don't know just how Brian's gonna do it, but it has to be done. And like my, like my old house, when I converted to electric heat, I had it completely re-insulated. I mean, I got that much insulation in the attic. They wanted up to R44 minimum. And I, I just don't know all the answers. That's where this comes in, and if I can have the board members, you got this sheet, tell me which one of these dates you are available. It's either the 5th or the 6th of August, either at 8:30 in the morning or at 1:00 in the afternoon. 1:00 in the afternoon on the 6th, at 4:00 p.m. on the 6th, 8:30 in the morning on the 5th, or 4:00 p.m. on the 6th, and then gonna have a teleconference with, and they want all village officials sitting there, so they know what's going on with the program. Everybody's sitting there, and they're thinking, you know, we're not doing that, considering that the city of Plasper's gotta do 300 of them. It is actually rotten. Rotten. One. I mean, I got the list for the whole thing here.
George, I'm comfortable with any time you guys, but I'm free anything. Whatever you guys decide, I'm gonna be all right.
John's not gonna be here.
I'm gone Wednesday.
And Bumper gone all week.
I, I know he was leaving, but I don't, he didn't really tell me.
Tomorrow morning, if he has some luck, you can do a find out.
I can't.
Please.
I'm calling from a remote location.
I'll be gone this weekend.
It's not weekend?
No, this week. I'm going to Albany one day, and then the next day I'm going to, somewhere else to...
Wednesday?
Oh, Elizabeth Town and all that. Wednesday I'm going to Albany for grand jury. Thursday I'll be down, I wanna get a car down, downstate, so I'm out of the picture.
Can you call them from a remote?
Just do an "aye," Mr. Cooper. Bumper, what?
Can I, if I call this number between noon and 1:00, from let's say my daughter, my daughter town, can I get in on a conference call?
I, maybe you would be able to, call this number.
Or you call a number.
Yeah, you call a number, and dial in that ID number.
Yeah.
You should be able to get in that conference call and prepare to work.
I'll try it.
You could do that, too.
I'm on the road, so I won't go.
I'll try it.
Use his cell phone.
Yes, we're covered there. I tried it.
What date are you gonna pick? Are you gonna, tell me?
Tell me what day you wanna be there.
Whatever.
John, John, you can...
I'll just dial in whatever day.
Any day you want. And just tell them who you are and why. And I'll, I'll call Mr. Bellberry tomorrow and tell him.
Carol, you'll let me know which day George decides?
I will. But you're dumping it back on me. How about Wednesday?
Wednesday, 8:30? 8:30 or 9:00, you get over?
Where's that black book I had here?
That's when everybody's more alert.
I was gonna say the 8:30.
He has the evening, he has the sun.
You can decide tomorrow.
If you don't, they're all gonna think about lunch.
If it's the afternoon, he has a sun.
Hey, don't, what PM I'll call Barry and tell him I ordered lunch, and he's paying.
Yeah. You can decide tomorrow.
He owes me one, by the way.
Don't worry, he's been good to us, very kind to us.
That's all, I've got a cup of meat for lunch a couple years ago.
It's so long ago, don't even remember.
I do.
I'm looking for my daybook.
Can't help you there. I'll get Peggy on for it.
Probably. All right. We'll check that out tomorrow.
Right over.
Okay, dead result. We got our old police car out there, we got one bid, for $700, brick bachelor. I need a motion to accept it.
I'll make a motion to let that car go. It's a deal at 700. I'll second that motion.
Moved by trustee Jefferson, seconded by trustee Cooper. Any discussion? There being no discussion, all those in favor, both by your side of eye?
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carried. Sold, I'll sign the...
Would you like that money to go into the police car reserve?
That's not a bad idea, I said. See, now that it's empty now.
The reserve.
Yeah, that's not a bad idea. Put the money in the back of the police car reserve.
That should... So can you make a motion to buy it or something?
Do we have to make a motion?
Well, it's police, that way, that way...
All right.
Make a motion, we take the proceeds from the sale of the 1997 surplus police car and put it into the police department's new car fund, or whatever you call it there. Second.
Moved by trustee Cooper, seconded by trustee Burtz. All in favor?
Aye.
Those opposed? See, I didn't even ask for any discussion on that. Okay, you have a cut in front of you, a quote for, that's for extra paint for this job here. I had Doug Paris up here last, last week. He went through there, and he told those people exactly what he wanted. He wanted those beams where we rusted, scrubbed with wire brushes, and those areas be painted with epoxy paint. Areas that are not rusted can be painted with the regular paint. So that's what that's about, and for paint.
This is in addition to what you've already got?
Yep, this is extra paint that he had to order. To do the big beams on both ends.
Make a motion, maybe you want?
Yeah, I think so.
Was I adding that to the...
Added right on to the other one, yeah.
Never in there.
Thanks a lot. You're right.
Unbelievable. Worst contract ever seen.
Yeah.
It wasn't a contract.
Well, that's right.
Anyway, I'll make a motion to pay costs of materials for action.
Second.
Moved by trustee Burtz, seconded by trustee Jefferson. Is there any discussion? There being no discussion, all those in favor, both by your side of eye?
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carried. I think that's it for me. Trustee Jefferson?
Thank you, Mayor Rivers. A couple items on my agenda tonight. The first one is the municipal electric annual conference. Does anybody from the board besides the mayor like to go?
Nobody asked.
Somebody asked besides you?
No.
When is it?
September 15th through 18th.
I don't think I can come.
I don't think I can.
It's at the Radisson in Corning.
Okay. Well, how about if I make a motion to allow the mayor to go to the annual conference? And if anybody else wants to go, we can change the amendment, change the motion.
I might be able to. What days in a week?
It's like, look, it's during the week.
I don't have my black book.
I think it's Wednesday, Thursday, and Friday.
Wait, I got it right here.
Thursday.
Huh?
Yeah, Tom and Wes is the 9th.
It's Tuesday, Wednesday, Thursday, and Friday.
On Friday, though.
Okay, then I'll change my, I'll change my motion, and I'll allow the Mayor Rivers and trustee Burtz to go to the municipal electric conference in Corning, New York, in September. Put that one on the motion.
I need a second. I did? Oh, I'm sorry, I didn't hear you. Moved by trustee Jefferson, seconded by trustee Cooper. Is there any discussion? There being no discussion, all those in favor, both by your side of eye?